All right, like to call this meeting order for the Sacramento County Planning Commission on October 26, 2020. You can start with the opening statement.
Okay. In compliance, should we take roll first or go ahead and start with the opening?
We'll do a statement pledge of allegiance, then we'll take roll.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay. In compliance with directives of the county's state and centers for disease control and prevention, this meeting is live streamed and closed to the public. Empirical procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. When I open public comment for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, you will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. And written comments are always accepted. You can feel free to send your email comment to boardclerk@sec county.net and your comment will be routed to the board and filed to the commissioners and filed in the record.
All right, thank you. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And now we'll, we can do a roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Hahn?
Here.
Commissioner Martenson?
Here.
Commissioner Tatisi? And Commissioner Shelby?
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Go and call the first item on the agenda.
Absolutely. Item number one is a general plan amendment. It's countywide and the environmental documentation is that it's exempt.
Good evening, Commissioners. Todd Smith here, Principal Planner with the Long Range and Master Plans Team. This item is a general plan amendment to adopt the Sacramento Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District's thresholds of significance for SEQA analysis of greenhouse gas emissions in Sacramento County. This would be applicable to projects that are subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, only in the unincorporated county. The Board of Supervisors is the final hearing body. And just for background, the air district's Board of Directors adopted these thresholds earlier this year in April, following a pretty extensive public outreach and review process. So, little bit of background here. Statewide, for context, we have AB 32 from 2006 that requires greenhouse gas emissions reductions to be reduced to 1990 levels by 2020. And at the time, that was about 15% below 2005 emissions. Then a couple of years later, in 2008, we had SB 375, which directed the Air Resources Board to set regional targets for reducing GHG emissions. Then in 2016, 10 years after AB 32, came SB 32. And this sets the reduction of GHG emissions to 40% below 1990 levels by the end of 2030. So you can see there increasing reductions over time as we move through each decade, so 2020, 2030, and then future years, 2040, 2050. We're not there yet, but there's also the California Air Resources Board Climate Change Scoping Plan, most recently updated in 2017 in response to SB 32. And in Sacramento County, as climate action planning has occurred as far back as November 2011, and before that actually, when the county was doing the general plan update process, we also did a Phase 1 Climate Action Plan Strategy and Framework Document. That was adopted concurrently with the general plan update in November 2011. And then about a year later, the county adopted the Phase 2A Climate Action Plan, which was for government operations, September 2012. We are currently working on Phase 2B, or the Community-Wide Climate Action Plan. We started that several years ago. Our target completion is mid-2021. We're actually going to have a public draft, hopefully out by the end of this calendar year. These greenhouse gas thresholds essentially would replace the existing 2020 thresholds that were promulgated through the general plan update and the Phase 1 Climate Action Plan. And they would be used for projects that do not demonstrate consistency with the Community-Wide Climate Action Plan when it is adopted. So we see some value in having some flexibility for projects that either are unable to or for some technical reason, there's a need to not comply with the cap when it's adopted. The next slide, number five, is the text of the policy in the general plan where this would reside, which is why it's a general plan amendment. So this is Policy AQ4. We see, or you can see the changes in bold underlying text here, where we're simply referencing greenhouse gases in addition to the existing text referring to ozone precursors and also calling out the potential need for a greenhouse gas reduction plan similar to the way we do air quality mitigation plans. Staff's recommendation is to recognize the exempt status of this request under Section 15061b3 of SEQA. And then to adopt the resolution that's in the package tonight that recommends that the board approve the amendments to the general plan subject to the findings listed in this report. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions for staff?
I do, this is Kara. Curious outside of the updated threshold, if there are needed updates to, I know we're working on the community-wide plan now, but to the county operations based on SB 32 or the updated scoping plan? And if you guys are planning on that?
Yeah, in the context of the Community-Wide Climate Action Plan that we're in right now, we are looking at some potential revisions to the government operations in the Phase 2A Climate Action Plan. Things have changed to some extent in the last eight years. On the plus side, there have been a lot of achievements that the county has done in terms of its operations by way of primarily county fleets going to either all hybrid or other zero emission vehicles, as well as installing EV charging infrastructure and chargers at county facilities as well.
And is it, so are you then sort of, for planning purposes incorporating the operations plan within the community plan? Or is it just kind of updated as needed? I'm just curious if the county is setting any more aggressive goals for itself?
Yeah, I think it could be a little bit of both. We're not quite ready to have a public draft of the county, excuse me, community-wide cap yet, but the targets that we are envisioning as it relates to the cap are pretty robust in terms of where we want to go. We want to meet 2030 and show a pretty good downward trajectory in their emissions by heading into 2040 and beyond.
Okay.
Which is somewhat independent of establishing greenhouse gas thresholds, but they are linked. So we wanted to give a little bit of an update of where we're at on that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
We do have one written public comment that was sent to you prior to the meeting. Other than that, there are no verbal public comments at this time.
Yep, and got, I think we all got that one, thank you. If that's the case, we'll close the public comment and section and we can entertain the motion.
I'm happy to make a motion to move staff recommendations to adopt the resolutions recommended to the board.
Second motion? All right, let's take a vote.
And Commissioner Hahn?
Yes.
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatisi? And Chair Shelby?
Yes.
And the motion passes. And can we move on to the next item on the agenda?
Yes, please.
Item number two is there are zoning ordinance amendments countywide and the environmental doc is exempt.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Jessica Brandt, Senior Planner with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. And I'll be providing the presentation for this item tonight. I do want to point out that Wendy Hartman, the Principal Planner for Zoning Administration, is also on the line and is here to help answer any questions that you might have. This is the package of zoning ordinance amendments related to accessory dwelling unit standards, part like 68. So anyway, can we move to the second slide? So this package amends zoning code language related to accessory dwelling units and what are called junior accessory dwelling units. And throughout the presentation, I'll be referring to these as ADUs and junior ADU. The amendment package is designed to bring zoning code into compliance with a number of bills that resulted in changes to state statutes that took effect in January of 2020. The Board of Supervisors initiated this amendment package in April of 2020. And the final hearing body, of course, will be the Board of Supervisors. Next slide. So major amendments. There are a number of kind of policy areas, most of which are driven by the new state regulations. The first that I wanted to highlight is inclusion of junior ADUs as a use category, which was made to be required from the state. Junior ADU is kind of, you can think of as like a granny suite in a house. It is its own independent-ish living area. It can have what's called an efficiency kitchen, but not necessarily, doesn't necessarily have to have a full kitchen. It can have access into the primary residence, but it doesn't have to. It does need to have exterior access. The cap on the size of a junior accessory dwelling unit is 500 square feet. And again, this is all internal to an existing or proposed primary residence. And this is something that was highlighted in past legislation and put into state statute in past years, but as an option. Sacramento County hadn't adopted it as an option, now it's a requirement. And so we're including it in our updates. Another item that is new, actually, I think for all jurisdictions with this, these, the suite of legislation that came through, are that accessory dwelling units are now allowed in multifamily residential projects. Again, it's, the idea here, the idea behind all of this is trying to find ways to increase housing, lower-cost housing, alternate ways of housing people, getting to the mixed generations, and densifying and the like. And so in a multifamily residential project, accessory dwelling units will now be allowed where you can have two dwelling units detached from the building or buildings that are part of the residential project. And in the state statute, you, anything that's two units or more on a property is considered multifamily. So this would include duplexes. You could have these additional two units. You could also take 25%, but a minimum of one. You could create one unit or more of an ADUs out of existing non-habitable space. So garages and the like. We didn't expect to see this much in Sacramento County and we haven't seen it in a large degree, but we have had interest from owners of places like fourplexes that are looking at the potential to take, let's say, the garages of the fourplex and turn those into an accessory dwelling unit. So we are sort of working through this as we go. But this is another area that it would now be on the books that would be allowed. None of this counts towards density as well. An item that we wanted to bring through, kind of in collaboration with what we're doing to address the new state statutes on ADUs and junior ADUs, is bringing back kind of an old use category that we had, which is guest houses, as a category of accessory structure for occasional habitation, not for ongoing residency. This is something that we took away when it was easier to get the permits and run through any sort of entitlement to put in an accessory dwelling unit. But there were still a number of people that would come in and really all they wanted was detached studio where they can do art and occasionally, you know, the kid who's visiting from college can crash for a night. And they weren't interested in creating a residential unit proper. And we talked with both the Building Department and Code Enforcement. The Building Department was very much for this creation of a category. And so they provided us some feedback as to some restrictions that seemed reasonable to keep it from turning into a long-term residential unit. We've limited the size, we've limited it to one single room. And then there is, there are some use standards talking about occasional habitation. Code Enforcement was concerned about some issues with regulation of what is occasional habitation. And so after discussing with them, we do have a little bit of clarifying language that I'd like to read into the record kind of near the end that gives a definition for occasional habitation and also makes it clear that these aren't structures that are to be used for short-term rental. So they can't be used as like a vacation rental. So this is not something that the state is asking us to do. We just thought that after receiving the feedback from the public and building, that this would be a nice halfway step for folks that just really aren't looking for an ADU. They just want that extra room. Back to what the state is requiring, there are a number, oh, before I get there, the last bullet point here, revisions to accessory structure development standards. A lot of that's related to incorporation of the guest house component. And then also, there was ongoing confusion having agricultural-related accessory structures in the same table as general accessory structures. And so we have pulled those two use categories apart. And we have one table that goes into the residential accessory structures like garages and the guest houses and the like patio covers and whatnot. And a second table that includes incidental agricultural structures like barns or stables, chicken coops, a big one, and the like. So that's just something to touch on there. Next slide. Yeah, so revisions to ADU development standards. Again, you know, this was something almost exclusively driven by the new state statutes. And we did do a lot of checking in with the state Housing and Community Development Department on some standards that perhaps were not as clear as they could have been or were open to interpretation over the last few months. So it's actually been really nice to have this time to kind of ground truth as we go with the interim standards that we put into place while we were working on our finalized standards. So we feel pretty good that the standards that we have listed match with the state. We do have to provide them to Housing and Community Development for a review and they will respond if they see anything that's of issue once things get adopted. We did include standards for the junior accessory dwelling units. Some highlights from development standards that have changed. The state did require that accessory dwelling units be allowed to be up to 850 square feet for a single bedroom or a studio and up to 1,000 square feet if it has two or more bedrooms. You are not allowed to include lot coverage as one of your criteria. And the rear and sides setbacks are allowed to go down to four feet. And you know, again, this is all state statute, we're responding to it and putting those in. Those are kind of the highlights, especially as we've gone through CPAC meetings that have sort of cropped up as sort of wow. Other items that we have changed are more procedural. We, the state statutes have made it, in the intent language, made it very clear that non-objective development standards are not allowed. And so we did take a look at some of the development standards and findings that we had included in Chapter 6 of the zoning code, which is our administrative chapter, and found that they may not meet the test of being objective. For instance, some of them were context-based and the concern is that in a certain context, one determination would be made, another context, another determination. It wouldn't necessarily be objective in the way the state is looking for it to be. So we have removed some language from findings. If a property owner wishes to receive a variance or deviation from a standard, they can still go through a special development permit. But the special development permit would just refer to our standard findings, which are very generic. So the hope is that that all meets the standard as well for the state. And there is also a requirement of kind of streamlining these projects through. And we had on the books accessory dwelling unit administrative permit. This was sort of a review of some of those development standards sign. Again, kind of a context-specific review. Because of that and because of the streamlining need, we are recommending that it be retired. And so we actually have, in the interim, based on advice from HCD, we did stop utilizing this permit process. Accessory dwelling units that meet all of our standards now, just move forward to building permit. And then another item is clarifying in Chapter 1 of our code that there is an effect on the state, of the state regulations on our special planning areas and neighborhood preservation areas. Any ordinance that is more restrictive than the state allowances, that language is invalid. And so we did try, when we were going out to the CPACs to highlight this, it's not something we can do anything about, but it was definitely more of a public education that this is something that would happen. Some of our especially neighborhood preservation area ordinances do have additional setbacks or size restrictions. And it's, it'll probably be an ongoing public education to have people understand that this is an issue. One thing that we do plan to do is include a slip sheet in front of the ordinances where this may be an issue, just so when people pull that regulation, they're met with that information at the time that they look at it. Next slide, please. So as I had mentioned, we did go out, we sent a message to our CPACs asking if anyone would like a presentation on the amendment package. And six CPACs did request that. They were given in August and September. There was discussion, of course, but no significant comments were received from the CPACs. And then we also posted a summary of the amendment package on our website. And before I get to recommendations, I do need to, I'd like to read in specifically the changes that we were looking at or the clarifications that aren't in your package but were discussed with the code enforcement. And also to reference the addendum that was sent to you, I believe, late last week, which is asking to include a fix to our Chapter 6 section relating to penalties for violating zoning code provisions. Our language is outdated and so we are looking to update the language to be more general so that if things change in the future, we don't have to change the language and also get rid of the incorrect language. That isn't related to this package, but it did come up while we were working on this material for the Planning Commission. So we would like, we would request that you include that in your motions. The clarifying language that we would like to add related to the guest house, we would like to specify in the use standard for accessory structures for guest house that occasional overnight use means no more than seven nights in any calendar month and that a guest house may not be utilized for short-term rentals. Both of those items, we are recommending get put into the guest house definition as well.
Can you read that exactly?
Oh, sure. So for section 393CC is residential accessory structures. One C relates to detached guest houses. And we would add occasional overnight use means not more than seven nights in any calendar month. And also, guest houses may not be used for long or short-term rentals. And then those phrases would also be added to the definition for guest house. And then we may, just as, as an aside, have potential minor technical updates. Just as we've gone through this with changing the tables, things seem to crop up when new eyes take a look at it. So just a note on that. Next slide. Okay. So the Office of Planning and Environmental Review staff are recommending that the Planning Commission make the following recommendations to the board. Recognize the exempt status of the amendments pursuant to Section 15061b3 of the California Environmental Quality Act. And recommend approval of the proposed zoning code amendments as presented, which is in the strike-through ordinance as I've read them in and as presented in the addendum. And if you'd like to talk more about the additional language, I'm happy to. This was something that staff thought seemed reasonable for a definition of occasional overnight use. But we're certainly open to suggestions. And with that, my presentation is done. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Kara. I guess I am a little curious about how you landed on seven days if somebody has family visiting or friends out of town. I mean, I know the goal is to keep it a, you know, a part of the residence and not turn into a short-term rental, but curious about that. And then also, you know, if some resident was interested in using as a short-term rental, getting a permit for that purpose, would they be precluded because of this language to do that? Because I believe the process is just to go and get a short-term rental permit to allow for that, for that use. So curious about that.
Jessica, excuse me, Jessica, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, at least the first part, Wendy.
Okay. So this is Wendy Hartman, Principal Planner. There was not any exact science behind the seven day. I actually just Googled the term occasional habitation, occasional occupancy, and seven days came up a couple different times. Quite frankly, code enforcement would prefer that we didn't allow any habitation in these, in these structures, but that is kind of trying to balance their desires with the desires that we've heard from the general public, which Jessica had already mentioned, as well as comments that we received from the building department, because they get requests about these types of structures all the time. So the duration, we, if there are other suggestions, we're happy to consider those and bring those forward to the Board of Supervisors. And then with the- So with the, with the short-term rental, because they are not really intended to be a dwelling unit, we had concerns about allowing them to be used for short-term rental purposes. If someone's using it once in a while because they have a family member staying the night or a friend coming to visit, that's a little bit different than someone who then would be able to rent out one of these units, you know, seven days out of the month, which could pretty much be every weekend if you added, added them up, then that kind of changes the, how that structure is being used. And then it's also being used more in a, not really commercial, but they do have to get a business license then, they do have to pay occupancy tax, so it really does change the intent of that structure to something that is more of a permanent residence for, for regular occupancy.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm kind of confused because it seems like the purpose could be, I mean, the use, as long as you get the appropriate permit, then the structure is the same. It's a, it's converting, you know, for instance, a detached garage into an apartment essentially without a kitchen. So if you were interested in doing that for both family, occasional, but then if you were interested in short-term rental and you went through the process and got all of your required licenses and permits, what's to stop you from doing that? I guess that's the question in my mind, because the actual structure is the same. So even though you might have a desire for it to be occasional use to your own primary residence, but then if you change your mind and decide you want a short-term rental, it's, it's kind of the same thing, you just have to go get a different permit. So I guess that's why I'm having trouble sort of understanding why this, because we're talking about the same thing. We're talking about a room with a bathroom essentially, that somebody would develop. So why would you preclude them from being able to go and get a permit to use it as a short-term rental should they so choose?
So for our detached structures, it would need to be a completely independent unit. So in order to be considered an ADU, which that they, which then they could use for a short-term rental, it would need to have full facilities. A guest dwelling does not have to have full facilities, it's not required to have bathroom facility or efficiency kitchen or any sort of cooking-
Oh, I see. So there's no, there's no bathroom associated with it, it's just a-
It's optional.
Room.
It's optional, yeah, they would-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so as Jessica mentioned, sometimes folks want to have an art studio or something of that nature, and then maybe occasionally, you know, the kids have a sleepover and the kids are in there, or, you know, they use that as a bedroom when they have company. But yes, there's no requirement that it have a bathroom or anything in it. They, they could if they wanted to, but it's not mandated, where an accessory dwelling unit that's detached or attached, with the exception of the junior ADU, is required to have bathroom facilities.
Yeah.
I think what I heard too from building, that they needed some designation for a detached structure that allowed it to, where if someone wanted to build it so that it could be, basically it's sleeping, so someone could sleep in it. So, you know, they have different codes as far as whether something can be slept in or not. And right now, we didn't have a path for someone who wanted that accessory structure that would allow someone to sleep in it, but not necessarily be an actual residence. And so that's, that's where this is trying to go.
Okay, so I guess the, this is becoming a little bit more clear to me, so you can choose your use essentially when you're going, and if you, if you do have a, if your intended use is sort of the guest house, but you have a bathroom, but then you might want to use it as a short-term rental, you wouldn't then designate it as a guest house when you're applying for your permit?
Right, you would designate it as an ADU, and you can come back and ask for that change of use, install the kitchen, and now it could be a, yeah, short-term rental. And actually, our team chooses the short-term rental permits, so. So we would check that as well.
Okay, sorry, I just was having a little disconnect of like, wait, you can do this, but not that, but I see you have to pick your use, and then you can change it if necessary. You know, and then back to the seven day, I get that, the, for, and I'm sure it's for folks, you know, and code enforcement's probably desire to, you know, root out bad actors, but I don't know, it just seems, it kind of strikes me as a little restrictive if you have family come and stay or friends stay for, you know, a couple weeks or something along those lines. I think, I don't know, I'd be open to maybe a little bit longer, but interested in what my fellow commissioners have to say about that.
Yeah, no, I agree. During the holidays, it's, I was thinking the other, other end too, is like, how do we even enforce that?
Yeah.
So what, seven days or 10 days or 11 days? So I was thinking about that as well. I understand the guest house, like not, not, sorry, not making it a rental. So fully on board with that, I do have a little bit of, I've been thinking about the timing, that's probably the, the, that most trouble with this. Do you have any public comments on this item at all?
Not have any public comments.
Sure, sure, but I, yeah, I have a comment or suggestion or question, I don't know how you want to phrase it, is, you know, I'm hearing Commissioner Martenson, you know, asked the question of what's the difference between a ADU or a junior ADU and a, what's the term we're using, a, just a guest room that, you know, limited to seven days or 11 days, whatever the case may be. Maybe there, there could be a little bit more description, because I believe in the building code, when you actually use the term dwelling unit, it mandates a certain criteria that you have to have there, it's just not a bedroom, it has sanitation facilities, and also, I believe, a cooking facility as part of a dwelling unit. And I don't know that for a fact, but it just, I think that's, there is definition in the building code. So just, you know, for the general public, I mean, most people will ask, well, what's the difference? Where a seven-day, seven-day temporary space could have no kitchen, bathing room, and sleeping area, works all day long, but for ADU, I think you're mandatory, at least for building code, for a dwelling unit to have those. So I'm not sure if it makes sense to make that clarification unless you validate that with building.
That does, yeah, that, you, you've gotten it. The, the ADU has to include a kitchen, has to include cooking facilities, and it has to include sanitary facilities. And so in the development standards for accessory dwelling units, those are included in, in that table.
Okay, so, so it is described in there, yeah, because that'll make a world difference, like to the, you know, to somebody that's casual, they said, well, what's the difference? And that could help, you know, help the, somebody that, you know, help understand that, so there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, 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 we figured out what our recommendation would be to pass the public comment. I guess Commissioner Ham, you have any thoughts on the, on the timing as well?
You know, I'm agreeing with you guys, you know, you know, let's say my daughter comes home from college, it's a two-week, you know, between college or something like that, she didn't want to be in the house once, yeah, guest room. So, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, 10 days would be more appropriate than seven, because realistically, like I said, how it's going to get enforced is, is your neighbor complains, hey, you know, somebody's having a party over there, you know, they've been doing it for 14 days in a row, I'm upset. So, you know, maybe a, a more, well, I would say, back to a, you know, middle ground could be like a 10-day versus seven.
Yeah, that works for me, and like, I agree, I agree with both of your points that it's really, you know, it's impossible to enforce unless there's complaints involved, and if there's complaints, then there's probably a reason for it, but that gives a little bit, it's not quite as restrictive as, as a week, especially if it's total days throughout the month. That, that's fine with me.
Good, do you want to make, make a motion for that change?
I'll give it a go. I'll say, I'll make, to recommend staff recommendations, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations, with the exception of extending the seven-day guest limitation to a 10-day period versus seven.
One second.
Okay, and devote Commissioner Ham?
Yes.
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Teteche? And Chairperson Shelby?
Yes.
And the motion passes as amended.
Let's pick up the next item on the agenda.
And the next item on the agenda, I apologize, is the Planning Director's Report, item number three.
Hi Commissioners, this is Chris Puhuli, Principal Planner. I do not have a report for you this evening. I will just note under the scheduling matters, you did hear that the November 9th Planning Commission item or meeting will be canceled, and there will be a meeting on the 23rd. So that was, that's all that I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll cover three and four then.
Okay. And on to item number five. I take it, and there are no further public comments.
Well, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Thank you.
Recording has stopped.